Okay, then, I'm going to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. This is our regular meeting of the City Council for Minnetrista, May 4th. Our first order will be to stand and would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome. Just a reminder, if you have electronic devices with you, please turn them on airplane or silent mode, please. And again, for those of you viewing on YouTube, welcome as well. First order is to approve the -- first order, I will do introductions quickly. I'm Lisa Whale and I'm the mayor. To my left is council members Patricia Thole, Mark Vanderlinde, Pamela Mortensen, Bob Christians, and on the end, our consultant with WSB, our city engineer, Paul Hornby. To my right is our city administrator, Mike Birone, our financial director, Brian Grimm, our community development director, David Abel, and our city attorney, Ron Beatty, and police chief, Paul Falls. And we have our city clerk taking the minutes, Chris Lindquist. And then we also have a new addition that we'll be introducing to you in just a little bit. So with that, approval of our agenda, we will be adding one consent agenda item, and it will be Consent Agenda Item H, and it's a resolution approving professional services with WSB. And I'll read that when we get there. Other than that, I don't believe we have any additions. Anybody else? Anything? So I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the change of H.
Sir, second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we have special presentations.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The first order of business under special presentations is to introduce our new building official, Jessica Archer. So I'd like to give you a little bit more information about Jessica. She began her employment a week ago on April 27th. There were 10 other people that Jessica beat out for the position. A little bit about her, she has an associate's degree in architectural drafting and design from Anoka Tech, and she also has a bachelor's degree in business management from the University of Minnesota at Crookston. She received her Certified Building Official, or CBO license, from the state of Minnesota in 2008, and has about nine years of experience in the field. She's worked a number of different municipalities before coming here to Minnetrista. She spent some years with the city of Plymouth, the city of Crystal, and then almost the last two years as a building inspector for the city of Edina. This is a new venture for us, to have our own in-house building official, and we're very happy that Jessica is here. So I don't know if you want to come to the podium real quick, Jessica? Say hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to serve the residents of Minnetrista in this role. I look forward to the challenges, also to building relationships with the builders and residents alike.
Well, we're excited to have you. As Mr. Birone mentioned, this is a new venture for us. We formerly contracted it out, so this is an in-house service that we can offer, and we feel we can offer better service and a little more timely and prompt, so we really excited about this going forward. So welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for any of you guys?
Not at this time. I'm sure you're gonna have your hands full.
Thank you, guys.
And then I just want to mention, kind of give you one short story about Jessica. I do have a connection with the city of Minnetaka, so I don't want people to think this was my doing because of that connection, but while finishing up her tenure over at Edina, Jessica heard that there was, at the city of Minnetaka, that they had a plotter, which is essentially a large printer, printing maps and things of that nature, that was available. And it was only two years old. Minnetaka had two in service, they decided they're just gonna go to one plotter, they're gonna buy a new one, what do we do with the one that's two years old? They decided to sell it. She heard about it, and before she even started here, gave David a call and said, "Hey, Minnetaka's gonna sell this plotter." They're generally six to $7,000, sometimes maybe $8,000 piece of equipment, and we bought it for $1,500 because Jessica found out about it. And so, we have that here in-house, and so she's already paying dividends, so.
[laughing]
So we kind of like that kind of ingenuity, and it just kind of speaks to her and why we're, again, why we're glad that we hired her and moved forward with that plotter in place here. So, again, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have introduction for our new engineering firm.
Yep, and we have three people that are here tonight from Short Elliott Hendrickson Inc., which is SEH. They're going to do our water system improvements project. They're the engineering firm. I'm going to introduce Miles Jensen, and then I'm gonna let him introduce himself a little bit more than just me saying his name, and then let him introduce his two other associates here. So Miles, if you want to come to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, staff. We're pleased, we're excited to have been selected to work on your water improvements project. And with me is Chris McKenzie and Chris Larson. Chris McKenzie represents one of the people that will be working on the civil side of things, the pipeline and all that. And Chris will be working with me. He'll be leading the treatment plant part of it, and then I'll be doing the tower with some of the other folks that you met at our kickoff meeting here, for some of you that were there a week or so ago. We're very excited. Just a little bit about SEH. We're a firm of about 700 people, 10 offices in, or I'm sorry, 30 offices in 10 states or so, 11 states. But our headquarters, our home, is here in St. Paul and in Minnetaka. That's where our two biggest offices are in the state here. And so, like I said, we're very excited. The schedule that we have put together is quite aggressive. We'd like to see the project producing treated water by the end of '16, so December of '16, and we're gonna do everything in our power to make that happen. And I'm very excited to be working with Paul Hornby. Actually, Paul and I have known each other for quite a long time, both working together years ago and actually in school. So we went to college together, and so this is just gonna be great. So, I don't know if you folks have anything to add, but if you have any questions for us?
I don't. I had the privilege of meeting your whole team about a week or so ago. Very impressed and, again, very excited of the opportunities that await us, and also very excited about the aggressive time schedule. And yes, just looking forward to working with you.
I just want to make one comment. They helped and jumped right in. We had our deadline for the project priority list, and Chris helped us get that off right away to make sure we were on that for the PFA.
PFA funding.
Processing, so we, right off the bat, they've been very responsive and good to work with, so.
And then, do you want to talk about that at all, the PFA funding? Because I think you've got some new information regarding that, that we're in queue and we actually qualify? Or is that on another agenda item?
Um, we can talk about it just real quick right now. I believe that one of the previous meetings, I think, I came back and gave a quick update to the council under the staff reports that the funding for the PFA would be available in fall of 2015. I think there was some confusion because we're on the 2016 project priority list and gonna be on the 2016 intended use plan, which are a couple different applications and reports for it to be on the PFA, that the funds wouldn't be available till summer of 2016, but the state's fiscal year is the July 1st to June 30th. So basically, as long as we have all our items done, and by fall of this year, the funds would be available. I guess I can maybe let Chris talk about that a little more, but.
Good evening, Mayor and council staff. Yes, you're right, Brian, that as long as the, kind of your ducks in a row, there's an environmental review that needs to be done, other plans and specs need to be approved by the state, but I think that the PFA money is available as soon as, like, November of this year.
Okay.
And I think some of it is retroactive, too, so if you have qualifying expenses.
Okay. And that was really good news, because I know we had some concern about getting the PFA funding, so that's excellent news, so.
And I think that you have, we just submitted the PPL proposal that will then submit an IUP proposal, which is the Intended Use Plan. They select based on priority ranking. We wrote the proposal to try to achieve as many priority points as you can.
Okay. All right. Well, keep us updated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or Mr. Hornby?
Just one thing to make council aware of, with the proposal that SEH provided, they do have an aggressive schedule, and to keep that schedule moving forward, there are decisions that are going to be, need to be made and need quickly. And I think what I would like to be able to do is have staff be able to keep this project moving, and then when we, in our judgment, if something needs to come back to the councils, bring that back. Because with the tightness of the schedule to get this in the ground by the end of 2016, I think it's gonna take that bit of aggressive management to get it. Obviously, if there's dollars to be spent.
Right.
There's decisions to make on colors of buildings and those kind of things. Obviously, those are things that should come back to the council.
Right. Yeah, obviously, we'll want to have staff work on it as diligently as possible and as efficiently as possible, so, yeah.
Yep, I just want to summarize, it's, glad SEH is here. I've been impressed, as the council knows, as we, when we discussed and selected them, they were essentially a near unanimous choice of this, of this whole entire body, including staff and council. I did look at the SEH website today, just, and saw Miles's bio, and he's done over 70 water treatment or water treatment-related projects, if that's correct? Yeah?
Water treatment plants.
Yeah, so I think we've got a lot of experience there as the lead engineer in this with that kind of experience, so no wonder they were our top pick.
And it was unanimous, I might add, the council. All agreed that you were the best, so we're excited. And then I know that there's also going to be a tour scheduled. We've had to figure out a date to take the council to look at facilities, so we actually know what we're, so we can actually physically see what's going to be built, or something similar.
Something similar.
Similar, yeah. So, looking forward to that, too, so. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. Next, under special presentations, we have a financial update. Mr. Grimm?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council, and I'll keep this relatively brief, because usually at the beginning, or first few months of the year, the first quarter, there isn't too much out of the ordinary that's happened. I believe I mentioned in the memo, and this starts on page three of the packet also, that the 2014 audit financial statements will be at the next meeting on May 18th, so that's when you'll have all the year-end numbers, and our auditors, Clifton, Larson, Allen, will be out here to present that. But for tonight, we're just gonna talk about the first quarter numbers. As you can see in the memo, I'll just put up, pick out a couple highlights. Revenues at this type of year are always usually in the single digits to budget, and obviously, that's because of the property tax being paid twice a year, basically, in June and December. So if you look at the revenue report on page four real quick, I mean, our other big number is building permits, which we're about at, about five lines down there on that page, we're at 25%, roughly 24%. So there's really, yeah, nothing else to see there. I mean, I think last year we were at 6%, this year we're at 7%. So at this time, and our revenue is just, yeah, we don't get much in the first part of the year. As far as the expenditures, that's pages, I think, five through nine, we're at 23% overall in comparison to actual numbers to our budget, which is basically right about where we should be. I think last year we were in the low 20s when I look back also. Nothing really, you know, stood out to it when you go through those pages either. I think, trying to say, I think administration, we were a little under budget, but that's obviously, we haven't filled our one budgeted position yet, you know, for the new HR communications person, so otherwise, everything out there is tracking pretty well. And then lastly, I attached the cash and investment total report on page 10 for all funds. On that total, as of the end of March, is basically that 11.4 million, and the only fund with the cash deficit balances is that timing difference with the amounts we paid to Mount Fire for their building improvements from several years ago. Otherwise, you can see on page 10 there some of the cash balances that we have as far as, I mean, I think everything, you know, we talked about the park dedication fund earlier in the work session where we're at there, the general fund, some of our other enterprise funds, the water sewer, are all, I think, doing well for that this point of the year. So unless council has any questions, this is just the standard, I guess, check-in or quarterly report just to, you know, for myself to let you know if there's anything really that stands out in the first part of the year here. And right now, I think we're pretty much on track for a good year so far, so.
Brian, just a quick question on some of the road improvement debt funds. Specifically, I'm looking like Enchanted Bridge, and I know that was done in '03, but is there, have you looked at lately, is there any way of combining these into one debt fund and/or refinancing them at a lower rate? I know rates have gone down significantly since '03.
Yeah.
So I know, I don't know if you've done that in the past?
We do. I check in with our financial advisor usually, at least a couple few times a year, as far as whether it makes sense to refinance. And remember during 2014, we did refinance the 2007 bonds and the 2005 bonds, which one was for a water project, I think it was a water tower. Well, it was, you know, for water infrastructure improvements, and the other was for the Maple Crest Street project. So we did do that, as well as refinance the EDA lease revenue bonds to the facility, or CIP project bonds. So we do always look at that. I think the Enchanted Bridge bonds, sometimes it has to do when it's callable, call dates and that type of thing. So I think when they looked at that, there, or there's gotta be enough present value savings at 3% to 6% or whatever, so.
Okay. Because of the cost of free.
Yeah, the issuance cost.
Right, issuance cost, okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Just one on the property insurance. I know the property insurance and workman's comp is extremely high. Is that due to the fact of the payment schedule?
Oh, yes, yeah, and I tried to highlight that in the memo. Those, we've made the full payments for the year.
So that's?
So, yeah.
For the whole year, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, not quarterly.
The health.
Well, you're quarterly, but, yeah.
Yep.
Pay in advance.
Yeah, yeah, correct. So those were basically paid for the whole year, so that's where you'll see those, is that, you know, around, give her, around 100% or give or take, so.
Correct.
Good question.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions by council? Otherwise, thank you very much, Brian. It's good to get that update. So that concludes our special presentations for this evening, and we'll move on to next item on the agenda, is persons to be heard. I don't believe we have anybody signed up, so we'll move on. We have under consent agenda items. We have approve our regular meeting minutes from April 20th, approve our special meeting minutes from April 20th. Resolution number 68-15, approving claims. Resolution number 69-15, approve change order number three to automatic systems for the SCADA project. And number E is resolution number 70-15, approving encroachment agreement for landscaping at 1420 Westwood Drive for the Gillespie Park between the city of Minnetrista and Tony and Rebecca Leonard. Number F is resolution number 71-15, approve site plan review to remove and replace existing scoreboard and concession signage for West Tonka Public Schools at 5901 Sunnyfield Road East. Number G is resolution number 74-15, approve 2015 voting season right-of-entry authorization agreement with Lake Minnetaka Conservation District. And number H is resolution number 75-15, approving agreement with WSB and Associates to provide professional services, develop a master plan for a playground parking lot and splash pad in Isle Park. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through H?
Motion to approve.
Sir, second?
Second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Consent Agenda Items A through H. Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Now we'll move on to our business items. We have a public hearing, and this is a temporary one-day sale of an intoxicating liquor license for the Northwest Tonka Lions.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, an application for a temporary intoxicating liquor license for the Sip Saver and Shop hosted by We Can and the Northwest Tonka Lions was received on April 21st. It was a little short in our notice. They originally assumed that the address was in Mound, so they thought they needed to go to Mound first, but then they realized that they needed to come to us. The event is gonna be held with the intent of fundraising for We Can, a nonprofit organization that provides emergency assistance to prevent homelessness, meals on meals, a mobile market, and family support. State liquor law requires a liquor license any time a monetary transaction takes place associated with the service of alcohol. Northwest Tonka Lions is a charitable organization, so they do qualify for the temporary intoxicating liquor license. The Minnetrista Police Department did do the background check and everything, their background came back fine. Staff recommends the approval of this one-day temporary on-sale liquor license to the Northwest Tonka Lions in conjunction with the Sip Saver and Shop event being held on Saturday, May 9th, at the Voyager Environmental Center from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. with the following conditions. No alcoholic beverage may be permitted on the property except those served by the Northwest Tonka Lions. No alcoholic beverage may leave the premise. All servers must be a member of the Northwest Tonka Lions Club. On-site ability to call 911 must be provided, and all federal, state, and local laws must be observed.
I just have one question, and maybe this would be for the Lions Club. So it's like a wine tasting?
Yes.
And are they, so wouldn't they want to try and sell wine? I mean, you know, so.
That's not what they were proposing.
Okay.
That's not what the event is for.
Oh, okay. All right, so it's just, it's just if people pay to taste the wine, but.
Well, they're paying, it's more for the fundraising, so.
Right.
The fee is, I believe it's $30.
Okay.
And that gives them tasting food, there's live entertainment.
Okay.
There's multiple events going on.
Because I didn't want to say they can't sell wine if that's what they wanted to, you know what I'm saying, if that was the fundraiser?
Unfortunately, they would not be able to do that.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody here from the Lions Club?
No.
All right. Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll open the public hearing, because it is a public hearing. Okay? So I'll open the public hearing. Anybody that wishes to speak for or against this application may do so. Is there anybody seeing nobody? Then I'll close the public hearing and take it back to council. It's a great, I think, venue, I think, for the We Can, of course, good organization. Any comments, questions?
This has been in the plan for some time. I'm a little bit involved in it from when it first started, and it's very well done, very well planned, other than the fact that they thought they were in Mound, that's the only.
Yeah, I think we've.
But other than that, I certainly would make a motion to provide a temporary one-day on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Northwest Tonka Lions.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we'll move on to our business items. Approving our recycling contract with Waste Management for September 1st, 2015 through August 31st, 2020. It is a five-year contract. Staff?
Mr. Grimm is going to handle this one.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Birone, Madam Mayor and council. This item came about, as far as our current three-year contract expires in August of this year, so staff started discussing with Mr. Donnelly, Mike Donnelly is in the audience, and I'll probably, once I get done introducing the memo, have him maybe come up and speak for a minute or two, but we had a very good, I guess, negotiation or discussion as far as some of the things that staff wanted to see in the upcoming multi-year contract. I guess for background, I guess, the city did go out for an RFP in 2012 for the recycling services, and at that time, we received three proposals back, our current vendor Waste Management and two others. And I guess, the city, we found them to be very competitive in terms of price, as well as providing excellent customer service and being responsive to our residents and city staff with any, you know, questions that any of us may have. We did some research also as part of this process and, you know, found that the rate quoted is very competitive, some of our neighboring, you know, Henneman County cities, seems to be representative of the market. One of the things we did ask Waste Management for, and they were willing to do, is, as you'll see in the memo, it'd be a 10-cent adjustment from the current rate in the current year to $3.50 per household per month, and then after that would stay flat for the remaining four years of the contract through the term of August of 2020. So we saw that from a staff perspective as a real positive as far as budgeting and long-range planning and for trying to minimize any potential rate adjustments, you know, to our users in the future. One of the things that also was outlined in the contract in section five of the contract is organics. I know the county keeps talking about that, and we decided to put that in there, that we'd bring that back as sort of a, you know, addendum to the contract as far as what we want to do. I think right now, we're still even a staff working with the county as far as how we'd want to offer that organics program. Would it be some sort of, people that want to do it, they'd pay some sort of additional fee, or how we would structure that, but that was something we figured we would have a separate discussion on. The contract would go into effect as of September 1st of 2015. Right now, we'd just be fulfilling the current terms of our contract. And then, you know, like I said, the term is five-year, and then some of the opt-out and renewal provisions are on pages, are in sections two to six in the contract. The contract in your packet's on pages 64 through, runs for several pages there. To, you can see Appendix A on page 69 is the rates, which basically is, you know, $3.50 and then, you know, the same in all the years. And otherwise, yeah, I guess, maybe I'll have Mr. Donnelly come up and speak briefly, and then, I guess, give what, maybe open up council for questions from there.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thanks for inviting me out here tonight. As Mr. Grimm mentioned, we have started looking at the negotiation process and where we wanted to be, and one of the things that he did bring up was trying to be able to budget things. CPI increases, fuel tables, you can't budget them, we don't know what they're gonna be ever. So that's where we've been up with a set price. We took a 10-cent increase this year, which is 3%. We're okay with going the next four years without an increase. The other thing we did is we removed the fuel table. There won't be a fuel charge anymore, so that allows the city to budget and know what they're gonna be paying, so essentially, until 2020, you know what your recycling's gonna cost. The only thing you'll have challenging on that is the number of homes that come in, but you're getting paid on that as well, so that helps out. As he also mentioned, the organics program, there's a couple different organics programs out there, and we're just waiting to hear what the city would like to do on that and kind of what the county wants to do, because it's a big push right now, but nobody seems to know where to take it. It costs us money to dispose of it, but everybody wants it to be the same price as recycling. Recycling doesn't cost us anything to dump. It does take, it costs us money to do the organic side of it. So we're kind of waiting to hear what the county wants to do, see if the more facilities open up to make it a cost-effective thing for all of us. Do I open up for any questions you have?
I just have one question. If a resident needs an extra cart or would like a new cart or whatever, you will provide that for your charge?
Correct.
Okay, I'll hold you to that.
Recycling service we do as an unlimited service, so, yeah, that's not gonna be a problem.
Well, we recently had an issue with that, so I'm going to hold you to that.
Contact me or get the information.
Okay, thank you.
Over to me, and I will give you a card in order.
And yes, organics is going to be more and more, and I know the county is working on some sort of program. I'm sure they're gonna be rolling it out fairly soon, so.
Yep, and they're looking to do it where cities have to offer it.
Yeah.
Yep, and they're looking to do it where cities have to offer it. I think it was by two thousand sixteen. By her, it might be getting pushed out to two thousand seventeen, but they're working where cities have to have something available or offered or something like that to the residents.
Okay.
I'd like to say thank you for locking in that price for five years. That's kind of unheard of in this world today.
You're welcome.
And at the ceremony, I did get an extra cart. Super simple home call, and it was there.
You weren't the one that complained to me.
Linda, you must have got Linda in our Winston office. When they get to the Winston office, Linda has things done and worked through Jony, and those two, they don't talk a lot, but when they do, things are done right now. And if Linda's not able to get it done, I get it done.
All right.
She works directly with the operations team. So do I, so we make sure we get it done. But, if you have a problem, let me know.
Thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Otherwise, yeah, I guess we'd be looking for a motion to adopt the resolution approving agreement with Waste Management Minnesota Incorporated for the recycling services as outlined in the terms of the attached contract.
To make a motion, it stated.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution number seventy-two dash fifteen, approving the contract, a five-year contract with Waste Management. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Our next business item is approval of a variance for a front yard setback for an addition to a home at fifty-nine ninety-five Loring Drive. Mr. Abel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. They are seeking a front yard setback variance from thirty-five feet to twenty-nine point four feet. This is for an addition on their existing house. Would relocate their garage and add a second story to the structure. Just a little bit of history on the property. It was built in nineteen sixty-two, the home was, and it did receive a front yard setback variance in nineteen ninety-two from thirty-five feet to twenty-six feet for, at that time, an addition on the structure. You can see here the proposed addition area. Next slide gives you existing and proposed front elevations, left being the existing, and then on the right, you can see the second-story addition with the garage relocation that they're adding to the structure. Staff is recommending approval of this variance based on the findings of fact listed in your staff report. We find the request is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of our ordinance, and it is also consistent with our comprehensive plan. This request is certainly reasonable, and the circumstance that is unique with this property was not created by the applicant. The hardship, if you will, with this request is the existing location of that home. It's considered a legal non-conforming structure. They're simply adding on. They're not encroaching any further towards that front yard setback or the existing structure than what it already is, so therefore, the request would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Planning Commission did review this at their April twenty-seventh meeting. They held a public hearing and voted six-oh to recommend approval. I will note that no one was present during the public hearing. At the end of the meeting, there was one person still in the audience. The Planning Commission asked what they were here for. They were here to hear this item. They did not object to it, but did get up and speak and just ask that Planning Commission and/or council consider looking at height when you're looking at variance requests like this. So, the idea being if you're going closer to the road, that you should maybe consider how tall that building is going to be. We have nothing in our ordinances right now that restricts that. They are meeting our maximum height requirement of thirty-five feet with this proposal. They are meeting the side yard setback. So, that was the only comment that was made from a resident. So, again, it was not technically during the public hearing, but the commission allowed that person an opportunity to speak, and that was what was said. So, with that, I'll turn it back to council for questions.
Any questions? Any...the applicants are here this evening. Would you care to add anything to staff?
I'm just...
Okay, all right. Thank you. So, questions, comments? It is a variance, so approval, and it was recommended for approval. They're only seeking a front yard setback, no side yard setbacks. They won't be exceeding the height requirements or restrictions that the city code already has in place. There was discussion about a fence. They're not going to be erecting a fence that would require a variance. So, the only variance is a front yard variance.
I realized at one minute to seven that I probably should have checked in with Mr. Barone as far as whether I should vote on this item or not.
Yes.
But, as a resident on Loring Drive, and I think we've probably only got about twenty-two homes on the cul-de-sac road, the architectural enhancement that would be done would be an enhancement to the street, and so I think that it would...not speaking on behalf of all of the residents on Loring Drive, but I do think that they would welcome this enhancement to your home. It looks like it's beautifully done architecturally, so...
Well, I think I may turn to Mr. Beatty to comment. I don't think this is an issue, but it feels like there's a...if you're wondering if you should vote or not, it's a conflict of interest. I'll let him quickly address that.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, council, conflict of interest in Minnesota really deals with financial interest. In other words, if anybody has a financial stake in whether the variance is granted or not, then you'd have a conflict of interest. I don't hear you saying that. You're simply, I think, sensitive to the fact that you live close to this and so have that kind of arrangement. That's not a legal conflict of interest. You're certainly not precluded from voting. The only other thing is, it's always important to make certain that council member can make an objective decision based on what's good for the city rather than on personal interest. So, as long as council members feel that they can do that, I see no reason why you can't vote.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
I will make...excuse me. I will make a motion to approve. It looks like it's going to be an asset or an improvement to the community on Loring Drive, so I'll make a motion to approve the variance for a front yard setback for an additional addition to the home at fifty-nine ninety-five Loring Drive.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Could I also ask for clarification? Does that include recommendations by staff?
Yes.
Thank you. Is that okay with a second?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions, discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much, and go forth and build. All right. Next, we have appraisal report regarding the proposed North Water Treatment Plant site.
I'm going to let Mr. Grimm start with this one. If I need to chime in, I will, so...
Okay. Thanks, Mike, Madam Mayor and council. I guess, yeah, I'll probably give a brief introduction and then turn it over to Ms. Lindstrom in the audience, as well as I'm glad to see SEH stayed too, because there'll be some probably subsequent steps regarding the land that comes from the discussion that I think, as we talked earlier, this has a quick timeline, or, you know, we want to keep things moving. So, everyone should have a copy, a printed copy at the desk of council, as well as I had emailed out earlier today an electronic copy. Basically, yeah, the main thing I did was get the quotes and bring those to the last meeting, and then the council selected Ms. Lindstrom. So, she did then the work and coordinated with the school district and others that she needed to. So, I'll probably turn it over to her to let her go through the report and then take any questions from council or staff, so...
Okay. Thank you. Madam Mayor, council, staff, the report is...basically, it's an appraisal report that considers the value of the school property in its entirety before the acquisition of approximately one acre of land. The proposed location was provided to me by staff. I did speak with the superintendent of the schools and inquire if he'd like to accompany me during the appraisal, the inspection, excuse me. He declined. He did grant me, you know, permission to inspect. I did not trek through the property, however. I will say that. So, I did conduct my inspection a week ago Saturday. It was a glorious day, if that matters, but a week ago Saturday, and then I inspected the comparables, which are contained from the report on page twenty-seven and thereafter. In theory, the task before me is to say, what is the value of the entire approximately sixty-nine acres of land if it were to be developed into its highest and best use, assuming it were vacant? If that land were vacant, the highest and best use of that land would be single-family residential, which is how it is owned. A developer would likely purchase it. Municipal utilities could be extended throughout. Capacity does exist. I verified that with city staff and like, and I think as well, Paul. And so, that would probably be the use of the property. It would be developed. Infrastructure would go in, and single-family residential homes would be built. So, the question is, what would a developer pay for all sixty-nine acres, knowing the development potential and the costs associated with that? The way we go about determining that is to take a look at similar types of properties and make adjustments, and those are the comparables within the report, page twenty-seven. There are several developments. I'm sure you're familiar with them. Red Prest...
Red Oak.
Red Oak, excuse me, Lane. Also, two of them located on Power Road one-ten, one very proximate, which is currently a pending transaction. I was unable to verify all of the specifics of the actual sales price. However, I do have the sheriff's certificate, and there is an additional cost because interest continues to accrue from that time period until closing actually does occur, which is anticipated to be May, possibly early June. I did verify information with assessor, city staff, as well as a participant, either buyer or seller. The adjustments are fairly minimal. Some have views of Lake Minnetonka. Some have the ability to sell boat slips. And so, to bring them down to what was the typical price paid on a per-acre basis for those parcels? And if you take a look at page twenty-seven, the value range is from...range, excuse me, from fifty-nine thousand per acre to approximately sixty-four thousand per acre. The sixty-four thousand is the pending transaction, and the most similar sale is probably comparable to at sixty-two thousand per acre. So, in doing this, I concluded an estimated value per acre of sixty-two thousand two fifty, and therein lies the basis of the per-square value that I concluded within the report, should the size of the acquisition shift a little bit from an acre to, you know, one and a third acre, or whatever may be necessary, or to less than an acre. So, I welcome any questions, any specific questions you may have.
So, I'm assuming...see, I don't see here where any deductions were made for, like, wetlands, because that's not buildable.
Um, is it accept...pardon me, is that acceptable?
I said because they're not buildable.
Oh, okay.
So, what...because the thirteen-point...so, for instance, on the nine-fifty County Road one-ten parcel, thirteen point two-six acres, but part of that is wetlands?
Yes. They built on approximately twelve point five, I believe.
Okay.
Every parcel or every development in acreage has land that's not buildable. The subject, in terms of the school property at sixty-nine acres, has a significant portion that has an easement across it as well.
Okay.
So, one can either value things based upon usable acres or on total acreage. And when I looked at these, all of them had certain areas within the property that were not usable, but were not considered detrimental either. Sometimes, they're actually an enhancement. Ponds, they're not buildable, but people will pay a premium to have that amenity.
Okay.
Walking trails, open spaces. So, in this situation, I used total acreage, not usable acreage.
Okay. Other questions of council?
I guess, for a little, I guess, clarification or follow-up. Obviously, the reason we're doing this, we had Ms. Lindstrom do the appraisal. We had a dollar amount. That was a real cursory estimate by the county done last February or whenever it was, and they had given a value. And I think from staff perspective, and I think council seemed to agree at the last meeting, the best thing to do was to go out and have an independent appraiser appraise the property. You know, that would be a good cost benefit to do, and then the cleanest thing to do would be to purchase the property outright from the school district. So, as far as...I mean, this is where the engineers are going to come into play. It's exactly what the acreage, you know, it's been determined, I think, that, you know, it could be two-thirds, maybe three-fourths of an acre, and I'll let, you know, like I said, SEH and coordinate with Paul and city staff as far as what we need for sure. But, if it was a comparable amount to what was looked at last year, you know, it would be about a thirty-nine, forty-thousand-dollar amount for if we need to purchase about, you know, it was point six-three acres last time. So, obviously, if that gives you an indication of the outlay that we'd be looking at potentially and working with the school district on, so...
I just have another question, though, to that point, and maybe SEH can help us out here. I'm assuming that would be for flat topography, and what if there's a big ravine or big dip? Would that alter the price of the piece or the chunk that we're looking to buy? And how much are we looking to buy? So, I guess, first question to you.
Okay.
Okay. So, if there's a big slope, a big ravine, or something like that, would that alter the price if that's within the area that we're looking to purchase?
Um, I think the important thing to remember is, this is a report that takes a look at the total value of sixty-nine point three acres.
Okay.
And what is the value of sixty-eight point three-three acres? And the difference between those is the sixty-two two fifty, and that is the value of a blended use of property.
Okay.
Okay. So, if I understand you, you're saying, because there is, if you take a look at this, there's an easement that's kind of going across that.
Okay.
It sort of severs this...there's a triangular piece that it somewhat severs over there, if you will, and it kind of is sloping. Because I did this based upon a total acreage, not a usable acreage, the answer would be no, an answer to your question.
Okay.
Okay. Now, on the flip side, there we go. Thank you. So, we have an easement there. So, the ability to actually ever build on that area, independent of its terrain, is very limited, just based upon that easement alone. It doesn't discount the value of it in terms of the totality of what a developer would pay for sixty-nine acres of developable. Now, you may be wondering, why would that be the case if you could hack off a half-an-acre and somebody could build a house on it or not build a house on it? The real question is, probably under your planning and development, you wouldn't allow this piece to just be split off into a half-an-acre parcel by itself. You would sort of require some development. So, it's a matter of the total cost of blended rate. Does that clarify anything?
Not really, but okay.
I think I can...
I think...yeah, we can talk about that.
Yeah, and I think what's not being said is, when we get to a certain point in time of actually sitting down with the school district and negotiating for the purchase of a parcel, again, not exactly sure what that size will be, and there's a couple of things at play here for that, but we can obviously have that as a consideration, and not all of the land is completely buildable. One of the things that we'll have to...I don't want to get the cart before the horse here, but one of the things we're going to have to do, what SEH is going to have to do, is do some soil boardings on that particular site. And so, we want to know, based on that, what that means as far as how big of a piece of land should we purchase. The one-acre valuation of sixty-two, as Mr. Grimm talked about, it puts us high thirties, low forties right now. If we bought the same particular chunk that we were talking about last February, that may not be the case. Maybe we buy slightly larger because of the soil testing and it ends up being forty-five. I don't know. Those are all things that we're going to have to have the engineer help us with, and then, again, those will all be part of the negotiation process. So, I feel pretty comfortable right now, not knowing the soil testing. Maybe I shouldn't put my neck on the chopping block like that, but knowing kind of where we are right now, I feel as if the money that we spent with Ms. Lindstrom is going to pay off, because the piece that we're going to buy is less than kind of what everybody had in their mind of the fifty-one thousand that the county kind of, in ten minutes, quoted us last year.
Oh, I think this is very good information to have. Don't get me wrong. I just want to understand it clearly. So, and this gives us a starting point, as Mr. Barone said. So, yes, thank you.
I think that's the difficult part with saying, what is the value of a half-an acre building site? Because in order to build on a half-an acre site, you need to already have water and sewer, and some costs that are already there that this specific property does not yet have, if it were subdivided. Those are part of the costs that a developer would incur.
Right. Okay.
And I think one thing that staff will be working with SEH on, and I think everyone knows that with the time-sensitive timeframe, this is something that we're going to stay on right away and hope to have some information for the next meeting, if possible, the May eighteenth, as far as a, you know, an agreement with the school districts, as far as, you know, right-of-way to the property, as well as hopefully having the size of the acreage in a dollar amount to maybe bring back to the school district. I guess that would be my goal, so, I don't know.
I was just going to say, we need a time schedule here, because I know there's some time-sensitive things with the school board, having their last meeting June first. We want to have all this in place. Do we need an update from SEH in terms of where we're at with this? Do we need an update from S E H in terms of where we're at with this?
Well, I don't think they're going to be able to give you any information tonight because we haven't, you know, basically discussed it tonight, it's our night to discuss it after tonight, then they're going to start going to work on this particular piece of property, whether it's soil borings, right entry agreement with the district so we can do the soil borings. That's all the things that Mr. Grimm is kind of touching on, so.
What do you need from the council tonight, then?
I think the, yeah, and in, I think this morning, when I looked at this again, the recommended city council action was motion to accept appraisal report as presented. I sort of cut it off there, I think it was Friday, late morning, no, so. So what it really should have said, and then council direction to, you know, work with the engineer and negotiate with the school district to purchase the appropriate piece of property for the water treatment plant, so.
That's, that was a dinner packet, so I'm like, what do you want us to do tonight? Okay, all right. Questions, then? Okay, Mr. Christians.
I understand how you arrived at the appraisal, but I think we're going to get nailed or be challenged on the issue of the sixty-nine and a third acres with an average price of being sixty-two two five oh. There are some property out there that are in that, where the school is located, that sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars would be a bargain. But the property that we're looking at is not. So that's the challenge, and that's the question that we may get nailed upon, is I understand how the appraisal was done, you took an average of what the cost would be of, which comes out to sixty-two thousand two fifty an acre, but of that, we're getting probably the worst piece of property that's in that district.
Yeah, and I think that's what Mr. Broney, that's what Mr. Broney was referring to, that's where the negotiations start.
So that's, that's.
In other words, the sixty-two is the starting point, and then that's for a full acre, we may not even need that. So we'll be working on that.
So that's the only thing I know that we're going to get challenged on, is why would you pay sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the worst piece when the average is out to be that much? But I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and I hear what Mr. Christians is saying, but also taking into consideration what you said and Mr. Broney as well, with that easement there also, I don't see us paying the sixty-two thousand, break it out per acre, but that's where the negotiating would come in.
Yeah.
And I think that we've got a pretty good relationship with the school district, and so I think that we would be able to come up with a fair dollar value that would fairly represent what we were getting and that the residents would be comfortable with, so.
Yeah, one other piece of information, as we looked at this piece of property in order to cite the water treatment plant there, we did ask for input from S E H on maybe where's the best spot on this particular piece of land. We thought it could be on the east side is kind of where we ended up, that was the original site, and we also talked about maybe just north of the current wellhouse there. Their input back to us is they think the best spot would probably be to the east side, which was the original location, and it's kind of where we stayed. But we did want to make sure that they at least gave us their input on it. One of the things that we're considering also, obviously, is if somewhere down the road, Moun wants to join us as we, and we want to expand that plant, we want to make sure it's cited in the correct orientation to accommodate that expansion, or both, the fact that our own city will grow and we may have to expand the plan just to meet our own needs. So, you know, it was also talked about, about where to put it and why, and so we're still in the same spot, thinking there's still plenty of room for expansion, so that was considered, so I don't know if I'm answering any questions that might have come up about what happens if we expand it, but that was discussed with the engineer.
I recall that, and I think they're clear on that, that we would want to potentially future, you know, fifteen, twenty years from now, whatever, may have to expand it for whatever reason. So I think they're aware of that, and their sizing will reflect that as well, so. Any other questions from Ms. Lindstrom, otherwise, I'm sorry?
When is the next school board meeting for them?
I believe mayor and council member, I think they meet the exact same nights we meet, the next two times we meet.
Okay, so you don't see a problem having everything confirmed by them by June fourth?
Well, we hope, we hope to have, as Mr. Grimm mentioned, we're trying to get a whole bunch of things done here before we come back in two weeks, and then from there, take it to them, so they can approve it at their June one, because they meet June one, just like we meet June one, so.
Yeah, they're meeting tonight, correct?
Yeah.
Right, they have the same schedule as we do, yeah.
Now, the only thing that they got going that.
They're only meeting once a month.
Once in June, I think they knock off in July and August, so.
So we got to, we got to.
It's kind of nice, but.
Talk about it in between.
Right, so we've got to.
But not a lot.
No.
See, we really, I think what council want, or what staff wants tonight, is direction from the council to go ahead and start negotiations with the school district, and in, at the same time, using Ms. Lindstrom's numbers here, at the same time, S E H is going to move forward and do, request right of entry, and then try and do soil borings, so they can determine how much land we actually need to buy. But we kind of need these things to happen simultaneously because of our timeframe and our time schedule, and then they'll be negotiating, and they'll hear back from S E H in terms of how much land we need potentially, and then they can talk to the school and kind of do this stuff, and hopefully bring it back to the May eighteenth meeting, and we can say, go for it, and hopefully everything can be done in written stone, whatever, by no later than June first. So it, there, it is a tight timeframe.
And Mr. Grimm has been in contact with the school superintendent, keeping him up to date on our process, and I know Ms. Lindstrom spoke with the superintendent as well, so.
May eighteenth or June eighteenth, I thought they didn't meet until June first.
No, May eighteenth they meet, and June first.
Just like us, exact same.
Oh, okay, I thought you said once a month.
I think that's it.
No, just once in June.
Once in June.
Once in June. Oh, okay, okay.
Every other.
Do they meet at seven P. M.?
We'll meet June, yes, we'll meet June first and June fifteenth. They only meet June first, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. So staff, can you maybe, Mr. Grimm, could you kind of state what you need, again, the motion that you would like from council?
Sure.
Wait, hold on, any other questions? Okay, then please do that, if you would mind.
I guess, so, yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, I think we'd be looking for a motion to accept the appraisal report, at least that you agree with the methodology and that that was fine, and it's a good starting point for staff to go and work with the superintendent and appropriate school district staff to start negotiating a price to purchase the appropriate land that we need as determined in conjunction with S E H, our water treatment engineering firm. Did I miss anything?
No, but we got it.
Okay.
A lot of moving parts there.
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made.
I second it.
And seconded. Do we, are we clear? I think we are. Very good, thank you. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And I know you'll be keeping us appraised at our next meeting.
Absolutely.
And, all right. With that, let me get back to my agenda here. That concludes our business items for today, to get back to the right agenda. Next, we have administrative items, council reports. So first, I did attend the Minnesota Mayors Association Annual Conference, it was held in White Bear Lake this year, very good conference, a lot of other mayors were there, and I was able to do networking, Mr. Christians. And so it was very good, very interesting, and a lovely city, of course, they did a wonderful job of hosting it. It was a lot of driving, I will have you know, especially during rush hour, it took me an hour and forty minutes one time, one way, anyway. And let's see what else. Oh, I also, Mr. Grimm and I met with the Gillespie Board, we had our annual meeting, this is part of our contract, annual meeting is supposed to take place between the three cities and the Gillespie Board, and so we did that, a very good meeting, kind of fleshed out a few issues and items. I think that that will be, a couple of minor little changes and tweaks that we're making, we'll be getting a bill, actual bill, twice a year, and we'll be paying that sometime in June, and then again, the second half sometime in December. We hadn't been receiving bills previously, we've just been paying it, so we're, no, 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 we need a bill. And then just some other things, and it looks like maybe they'll be saving some dollars on their property taxes, so that was, that's good news. In other words, as a five oh one C three, they shouldn't have to be paying property taxes, and they have been, so we caught that and made them aware of that and put them in contact with the correct individuals. Anything else? I attended the planning commission meeting, and that was my month, and we saw those things, or a couple of the items that were there that will be coming to us in the future, they were pulled because of some issues, and they'll come later on. And with that, I'll turn it over to.
Metamare, Susan Lane.
Yes, we will have a, I, Pam Mortenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mortenson and I are going to have a meeting, a neighborhood meeting with the residents on Susan Lane.
And also, so we, staff and the two council members did get a tour of the facility. If other council members are interested in doing that, please let me know, they opened up that opportunity, so contact me, the rest of you, and we can get that scheduled. Obviously, all three of you couldn't go at the same time because it'd be a quorum, but please let me know, and would encourage if you want to take the opportunity to go out there and visit the site, they're welcoming you to do that, so.
And then also, just FYI, I did meet with the homeowners association of Hunter's Crest, not a lot of people there, but still, it was nice just to talk with some of them, some issues that they had, so I did that also in April. I think that's everything that I have. All right, Ms. Thol?
I have nothing to report this time.
Okay, Mr. Vanderlinde?
Nothing.
Pioneer Sarah Creek, nothing new right now, meeting is coming up. Spirit of the Lake, I sent an email to everybody, did everybody get that?
Yes.
Okay. With just a few questions for some of you, if you guys could get back to me. Most of the meetings now have changed over to more communication via emails, although there is a meeting again next week, and, yeah, I think that's it, it's going well.
And also, you and I are scheduled for the quarterly all-city employee meeting, and that will be May twentieth.
Yes.
From nine to ten. We're doing these quarterly now to meet with all of the employees, and it's your turn, so. Mr. Christians?
The only thing I'm going to bring up is I did participate and attend the meeting, pass these down, they're together, keep wanting to pass them down, at the Weston Community Commerce, and we had as our guest speaker Jeff Peterson. For those of you that don't know Jeff Peterson, Jeff Peterson is the Weston School Athletic Director, okay? And this kind of ties into the consent agenda, because what you're seeing, what I handed out there, is what the proposal is. Mr. Peterson is actively pursuing a fundraiser where he's trying to get the businesses within the community to come up with three hundred thousand for the sign. The sign is going to be an outstanding sign, it's going to be put on the, at the school, it's a three hundred thousand dollar sign. So I just wanted to share with you, who was our guest at the Weston Community Commerce to pitch his fundraiser, you may call it that.
And I know that they have to, or they want to get the funds prior to ordering the sign, if they don't get the funds, then they don't get the sign, right?
So just wanted to bring that up, that's it.
Thank you. And then, next we go on to staff reports.
Mr. Grimm has an update, and I have a few, and then there's one that's not printed there, we're going to have Mr. Falls talk on one item.
I think I already covered my items, so it was going to talk about the PFA and a couple of lowest things, so I'll pass right now, I'll yield my time to everyone else.
Yeah, dole out your three minutes, right? Okay. All right.
I have a number of items I want to make the city council aware of. The follow-up session with Craig Rapp for city staff and our strategic planning, we're going to be holding that this Thursday in the afternoon. The HR Communications Coordinator position has been posted, I have it on the Lead of Minnesota Cities website, and I'm advertising that through the, I believe it's the fourteenth of May. That gives us essentially ten business days and two weekends, so hopefully we'll get a lot of applications for that position. As mentioned a little earlier, the, we talked tonight about roads and CIP for payment management, et cetera, and we're have back on the Monday, May eighteenth work session, we're going to talk about storm of surface water and that particular projects. As the mayor mentioned, May twentieth is the council staff forum, that'll be at nine a.m. here in the council chambers. And then the last item is that I will be attending the MCMA Spring Conference, which will be held next week, Wednesday through Friday, so I'll be at the office, that's up in Nisswa at the Grand View Lodge, so I'll be going Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday at that conference. And Paul, Chief Falls is going to talk a little bit about an item that came across the mayor's desk, essentially, and let him touch a little bit about it in case other councils maybe hear about this, about coyotes.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Broney, Madam Mayor, that actually wasn't what my staff report was on, but.
I guess it is now, right?
I can talk about coyotes if you'd like.
Yeah.
What I have, what I have for you, I guess I'll have two items.
That's fine.
So thank you, Brad, for giving up your time. First one is just a quick update, as you know, we had the storms last year, which resulted in major flooding, and we were part of the FEMA declaration, and so that has been a very, very long road, we're still going through that process. The good news is that there have been FEMA dollars available for reimbursement, and we don't get paid all at once, there's been all kinds of different projects that get paid out as we go and as those things become completed. So to date, this information is so new, Mr. Grimm doesn't even have a copy of this yet. But to date, we have been paid out just under two hundred and ninety thousand dollars in reimbursement towards those items that we have repaired and updated, and we are slated to continue receiving that money towards all those repairs we're still in the process of making. So with that, I just wanted to give you an update that we've come a long ways since we started that process. And I guess a special thank you to Public Works, specifically Gary Peters, because this storm event was, the vast majority of this fell on Public Works to determine the damage, track expenses, track staff time, and so on and so forth, and also Paul Hornby with WSB was part of that process as well, so. They really did the majority of the work, I just had to throw my name in the hat and then get us signed up, and they really took it from there, so really the credit goes to them, so thank you. And then, as far as the coyote issue goes, as many of you are aware, we've had, I guess, I shouldn't say a lot of complaints, we've had some of the same people complaining quite a bit about coyotes, and I think there's a, I guess, a misperception that there's a lot that cities or police departments can do about this issue, and the fact of the matter is there really isn't. And so I've had some conversations with people at the DNR, and our city is not unique to this problem, we have lots of coyotes where I live, just west of here. We also have, there's a lot of cities even to the east of us that have quite an issue with the rising coyote population. And so the bottom line is, statistically speaking, they, while they can be a nuisance and they're rather scary, the fact of the matter is there are no known reports of coyote attacking a human being in the state of Minnesota, at least according to the DNR. And so there's a number of things that can, homeowners can do, and so we'll continue to push this information out on our website, the police page, as well as in our newsletters, the police department specifically puts out newsletters. This was a topic about a year or two ago, and specifically, we have only, to date in the last year, have only had three reports of coyote issues. Of those, only one of those was a dog that was attacked, the dog was not even injured, although that's definitely scary for dog owners and homeowners, that's not something they want to go through. It's important to supervise pets, especially at night, can't just let the dog out, more importantly, you can't tie a dog up at night and leave it unattended because they just have no way to get away. But the good news is we haven't had any severe issues with this, other than the majority, vast majority of this is just sightings, and so we'll continue to push that information out, and a good resource is the DNR website, it talks very specifically about urban coyotes, which we would, this area would be considered, and there's all kinds of information on things that homeowners can do to try and prevent attracting them, and what to do if you come across them, and so on and so forth. So with that, that's all I have at this time, unless you have any questions or comments.
Paul, did you check with other, any other? Paul, did you check with other, any other communities to see if, or Mr. Barone, to see if they have done anything and how successful they were, et cetera?
Yeah, I did. The reason the mayor is asking that question is because there was one gentleman who called her about the coyotes, was citing something that the city of St. Louis Park did in the past. I've got a contact at the city of St. Louis Park, somebody I know quite well, asked her about their program. They tried one, it was very unsuccessful, and they abandoned it. They basically switched courses and decided to do just more public education, what homeowners can do, and they probably plucked a lot of things that Chief Falls is talking about from the D N R website. So, you know, I guess they had an incident where a bullet went through somebody's window, so, I mean, we don't want to go there with the shooting coyotes. It's just like a lot of other wildlife issues, whether it's deer or geese. Coyotes are here, they're here to stay, about the best thing you could do is just kind of manage it. There's not a city program that's going to do, make any difference, because the coyote issue here just gets filled back from a coyote from another area. They don't know a city border, so. There's really nothing we can do except maybe educate people, and if there's, that's something that Chief Falls has talked about, and even sent him the PowerPoint that they had on the city of St. Louis Park website about what you can do, how to scare them, how to approach them, what to do, what not to do, so. I think that's about the best we can do.
Chief Falls, I think you said that it's on the police website. Could we put something like that on the city of Menetrista website as well? Just that, you know, what to do, what not to do. Education and information is critical, and I think that that would be helpful if people do have a concern. I've seen them, and so, so just to know, you know, what do you do?
Right.
And the other thing is...
Just copying some D N R information or something.
Yeah, just have, we could include that in our next, some information in our next newsletter, you might want to do that.
Absolutely. We, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we can certainly do that. We've done that in the past, I think, because this is, this topic keeps coming up, we can certainly continue to do that.
Right.
And I think the main point is that, I think there's a lot of misperception about the fact that they can be hunted or trapped and moved out of an area, and that, quite frankly, just isn't true. Even if you were to move a certain population out, more are just going to come in, so. That's not an effective means of managing them.
The other thing we might want to point out is that if somebody has a pet that's been attacked or something, they should report it. See, if it's not reported, then we have no record of an incident, so if it's reported, then at least we have some kind of records, so.
Yes, that's absolutely correct. And then we would in turn report that to our local conservation officer. Again, it's just for informational purposes, but...
But you would verify the accuracy of the claim and things like that, and so then we would have, yeah. I think that's important, because sometimes people don't report it, and they say, well, this happened, but we have no record of it, so.
And, Mayor, one final item from staff. Mr. Grimm reminded me, this is the week that our Public Works is starting to do hydrant flushing, and I know that that was quite an issue a month or two ago. We have our distribution email list, we'll utilize it. We also will contact people, I'm talking more specifically about the Hunter's Crest neighborhood, we have the homeowners association's name and the email address. We'll let him know. It is going to take place, it does have to be done, I don't know if Mr...
Are you going to put signs out?
We're going to do all that.
Sandwich signs?
If I have to put a sandwich board on Gary Peters, we're going to do that, but we'll make sure that people there know the hydrant flushing is coming, so.
It's on the front of our web...
But it'll, it's going to be...
It's on the front of the webpage right now.
It's on the front page of the website right now, if you don't look at that.
But it's going to be citywide, so...
Citywide, they've already started.
Turned in the north.
All right, so, everybody beware, be notified. Your hydrants are being flushed.
They have to, so.
One other item, I know we've talked about this, having a joint Parks Committee, city council meeting, and then a joint Planning Commission council meeting, so maybe next time, we can bring our calendars, unless you know your schedules now, because we should get that on, it doesn't have to be in the next month, but we want to get them scheduled so that we can get as many of our commissioners to these meetings, so.
Would we do that as part of the special meeting?
We could, we could, mhm.
Instead of adding an additional meeting, it would seem to make sense to...
Yeah, we've talked about that, and so we want to plan that well in advance, and I know the next several meetings, for our special meetings, our work sessions are somewhat filled.
They're starting to fill our dance card up, so.
Yeah, so, might have to be this fall or maybe this summer.
Yeah, it could be this fall, I think that might be best. And the other thing that's kind of at work here is the strategic planning. We wanted to finish that and then be able to at least present something to them when we meet, so.
I just don't want to lose sight of that, because we did want to do that and kind of have some, all right. That's everything, I believe?
That's it.
So, we could sit here and look at each other and smile, I suppose, or, or...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.